For those who are going through health situations, or surgeries, or those kinds of things, and also those in our midst who have recently done that, we thank you for healing, we thank you for comfort, and your protective hedge over us. Pray for those in our town who might be going through some things that we don't know about, but you know what they are, so we ask for you to intervene in that, and for them to open up to you and hand their problems over to you. As far as the business of the town goes, Lord, we take it seriously, and we thank you for putting us in the position to do so, but we ask that you give us wisdom and humility in how we handle this business. So we are grateful to you, and pray these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll have our first public comment period for any matter that comes to mind that you can share with us. As we've said before, it's not a time for back and forth, we have to answer questions after the meeting. It's your chance to speak, and so you have three minutes to do so. Fill out a form if you could, and hand it to our clerk, and come up and state your name and address. Hear none. Going to make a couple of slight changes, a matter of housekeeping on the agenda. Item number two, under Roman numeral six, is to be stricken, and item number five, under Roman numeral six, is to be moved down for discussion. We'll call that 11A. Make the current 11, we'll make that 11B. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the designated changes that were just discussed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we have a couple of presentations, so I'm going to hand the floor over to Brandon first, and then Phillip will follow up right after that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Proud to recognize some employees tonight for work anniversaries. We have, you know, we always like to celebrate our employees, we appreciate our employees, we have a great team, as you all know. So tonight, we are celebrating two five-year anniversaries and two 20-year anniversaries. So it says a lot about some of the longevity that we have here, which is great for us. The first recognition is Galila Mulegeta, for five years of service. Her service date is, original service date was September 11th of 2018. I don't believe she is here tonight. You'll pass on to her for it, please, and I'll get you her plaque. Next is Scott Langford, our town engineer, public works director, who was told when he was hired that he would not have to deal with sewer or dams.
We lied.
But he does both very well. Proud to have him on the staff. You know, I can't say enough about him. So Scott, thank you, sir. Next, we have our illustrious town clerk, Dee Baker. Twenty years, September 22nd, 2003, she came to us as our, as one mayor, previous mayor would say, our director of first impressions. She was our, what was the title? Original title?
Permit.
Permit clerk, and worked our front desk, and greeted people, and was the big smile and the kind voice you heard when you called in, and as we love to see people do, she got promoted to town clerk, and has been serving well in that role for, gosh, how long now? Well, yeah, different, yeah, different, but she is our town clerk, she does a great job, she is a cheerleader for the team always, always positive, wonderful to work with. So, thank you for 20 years. Dee Baker.
You want to speak?
It has truly been a pleasure. It went by like that. You know, I started when I was 18. And it's been a pleasure, and I appreciate, I love working here, and I wouldn't change it for the world. Thank you.
We love having you. Thank you.
Her handsome husband is in the back. Raise your hand, Scott.
And then last but not least, this is a, this is a cool one for me, especially cool for me, 20-year recognition for Lieutenant Eric DeLuce. He started with us September 18th, 2003. I was a young corporal at the time. He spent six weeks in a police car with me as a trainer, so that if he has any faults, that's on me. But it's just been wonderful to see him progress in his career, and all that he's dedicated to our department, working himself up through the ranks. He has served as our, you know, our traffic, he's led our traffic unit in accident investigations for a long time now. He served as an interim police chief when I took this role. He's just served the department well, served the town well, he is extremely loyal, and I'm just proud to see what he's become for us. Come on up, Eric.
You want to say anything?
I don't think so. I can't follow that. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
All right, before we move to you, Phillip, and I just want to say all of our employees, some present, and we've got permanent employees here, we've got an intern here, we've got, you know, the, all of them wonderful, and we're grateful for you. And now we're going to recognize the intern.
So, Council, I know that you're aware that we participate in the Fayette County Board of Education's Work-Based Learning Program. For the past year, we've, we've had interns that have served with the town through the Work-Based Learning Program. Ms. Aura Carroll is one of them, she interned for us for the summer for our community development, in our community development department, and she did a fantastic job. She did an excellent job working with some CAD programs, some design programs, helping us organize some different elements of our comp plan for public consumption, and she did a fantastic job. She's a, she's a rising senior at Whitewater, correct? So I just wanted to recognize her, and I do have a little award, if you don't mind taking a quick picture with her. She did an excellent job for us. Arwen.
Okay, that closes out our presentations, and we'll now move to 11A, as we previously designated it. So, Brandon, is this going to be you?
I'll take it. It should be pretty quick. So, this was originally on the consent agenda, it was a contract for Bulldog Golf Carts to provide rental carts for the Founder's Day Festival. We sent the contract to Legal, Legal sent it back with some comments and requested edits. We believe that Bulldog is going to accept those edits, we just didn't have time to get those in place before this meeting, so we would ask that you approve the contract, or approve this contingent upon Bulldog accepting our requested changes, so that we can go ahead and move forward with that. If they do not accept, then we will, as they say, back up and punt.
Are there any questions about this? Is everybody okay with it?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the contract with Bulldog Golf Carts with the assumption that they're going to accept the changes in there for the amount of $625.
Second.
Question and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now 11B, Laurelwood Road Connector, Multi-Use Path.
Counsel?
Aye.
Hello?
All right, so I have quite a few here for you, so we'll just jump right through them. The first is consideration to award the 2024 Laurelwood Road Connector Multi-Use Path Professional Services, that's project number PW2024-06 to Keckenwood. As you know, Fayette County voted to approve, voted and approved the 2024 SPOS referendum. As part of that approval, the town has been moving forward with getting these professional services in line, and basically, the professional services are going to include design bid and construction admin services as part of the design process. This will include surveying and utility coordination, along with land acquisition documents as necessary. The design services are a lump sum fee of $23,700. The bidding construction administration services are done on an hourly rate not to exceed $15,800. These total for a maximum fee of $39,500. Once again, this is coming from the 2024 SPOS funds, and staff is recommending authorizing the mayor to execute and award the contract to Keckenwood for a total fee of $39,500 to perform the professional services on the 2024 Laurelwood Road Connector Multi-Use Path Project PW2024-06. I'd answer any questions.
But is there any anticipation that there will be any land acquisition involved in this particular?
There's a possibility, especially where we're turning to cross Briarwood, to maybe get enough of the swing. So there may be a little bit, but it's not a large, I mean, the whole trail is like 600 feet.
Right.
So it's a very short, short path, and just to remind everybody, this is going from the paved section of Laurelwood down to the dirt section over Laurelwood, and that allowed the whole Laurelwood neighborhoods, areas back there with the Foxford Run, and Laurel Forest, Laurel Lake, Ridge Road, all those will be able to come down, go down this path, get on the dirt section, I say dirt, unpaved section, and then connect in Castlewood to come downtown.
Going to be a crosswalk there, you know?
Yes, it'll probably have a rapid flashing beacon in it also. When you get up there, you'll have some signalization to so people know that there's people crossing.
Will this come all the way down Laurelwood, from the very end of it?
No, it'll start just, basically Laurelwood will turn into a share the road concept, where bikes, pedestrians, and
Cars.
Cars, thank you, will travel down the road like they do already, basically, and once you get up near the end of the road, far enough back where you're not at the actual intersection, it'll come off onto Laurel, the edge of Laurelwood, and then turn down Briarwood. Same thing when you cross the road, it'll go a little bit down, past the intersection on the unpaved section, and turn into the unpaved section, and go from there.
So the path will be in the right-of-way area?
Yes.
Alongside of Briarwood?
Yes, as much as we can do, yeah. And we always try to do that where we can on those kind of things, because land acquisition costs, you know?
Thank you.
Are long and expensive.
Hoping to make some money off of that.
Me too, Gloria.
I'm teasing.
Any other question?
I have a question, and it's probably not exactly related to that, but we keep saying the unpaved part, how many years has it been since we asked those residents if they still want it to be unpaved, do you think?
I have not asked them in my five years that I've been here. I've had one person request it, and I've been informed by people who've been here longer than I, that that has normally not been what everybody wanted. The person who requested it, I basically told them that if they want to do this, they probably need to get with other people on the street, and come to council, and talk at a public session, when there's a public speaking time, and make it known to y'all, or either send you guys a request to do this with some support. And I've not heard anything back on that. Obviously, y'all haven't either.
I don't think there's but one person living over there that's new. Or maybe one, maybe, yeah, maybe two people that's been there forever, the rest of them are new.
I mean, I can understand that it would become a cut-through probably for a lot of cars to go through, but
There's a lot of traffic through there now. About every time I go out, there's vehicles. Nobody's been complaining.
I'd like it if I didn't have to live on it properly.
But I don't, I don't think they care.
When they bought their house, it was dirt.
I've had two people mention it to me, that's why I said that, you know, I didn't, because I knew, you know, years ago, it was like, no, leave it alone, but then I think as ones that's lived there are gone, and the new ones coming in, I just wondered if it's something we might ought to address again.
I think if you buy on a dirt road, you know you're on a dirt road, unless the whole street wants to change it.
And if, if y'all want to direct me to do that, then we'll, obviously, we'll do that, we'll communicate with them, but
I think if we were to direct you to do something, it would be to do what you did. You told, I mean, you told that person, when they said that, that a larger group would have to, so what else would you do besides what you've done? Right?
Direct outreach, but
Letters to everybody, but then, you know.
He's going to have to make, make a direct, look, formal direction, or does that take a motion?
Or about, seeking about whether they want to pave the road?
Right.
Well, mainly, not so much pave it, it's just find out what the citizens think. Because I know years ago, everybody seemed to be okay with it, but I just, things change.
I think you're opening a big can of worms if we, if we just do this outreach, I mean, it's going to lead to a large discussion, and then if they do, then you got to fund it, and, I mean, if nobody's complaining right now, or actively seeking us out, if there's no issue, I mean, there's no issue with the road, other than the fact it's dirt, and, you know, I grew up on a dirt road, I get it. You know, the people that live on dirt roads like living on dirt roads. So, you know, we will do whatever you guys want to do, but, you know, I think we're looking for a problem. That makes sense.
I agree with Brandon, and I think by paving that particular road, if it's not a necessity, or people aren't crying for it, it's going to just increase the amount of traffic and the, and the amount of speed that people are going through there. And I think, you know, unless there's a real major reason to do it, I think it should just be left alone, and Scott, I think you gave them great advice, what you said.
I'll just pass that along to those that asked me then.
That I think it still stands, if they, if they want it paved, do, do talk to the neighbors, and let, I mean, let them come to us as, as a group, or, they want it, if all of them want it, then we certainly don't want to just ignore them.
And I think another thing is, is there's not a whole lot of right-of-way on some of those areas, so that really might be opening a can, like you say, so.
Okay.
Okay.
So back to this topic, I don't think we've taken a motion on this yet.
We have not.
Let's take a motion, and then if y'all want to talk some more, we will.
Well, I make a motion that we, we approve the contract PW2024-06 to Kirkwood for their professional services in the amount to, not to, not to exceed $39,500.
I'll second.
I'd motion a couple of seconds, is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I have a signature question before you go to the next topic. You come forward.
Okay. Well, all right.
I guess make that clear to everybody. So, what we're asking for is authorization for the mayor to execute these, there's still the contract associated with this that we take to Legal, we talk to them about it, make sure there isn't anything that they see that's glaringly disadvantaging the town, and once we have comments back from them, we take whatever comments there are, we approach the company, just like we were talking about earlier with the 11A project, or no, which one was it? We were talking about that earlier, anyway. The Bulldog part, yeah, it was the 11A project. So, basically, that's what we're doing tonight, is just getting, giving him that authorization that when we wrap up this last little bit on the contract, that he'll be able to sign the documents and move forward.
Okay, so what I just signed, I didn't need to sign?
Didn't need to sign it tonight.
Just to clarify this, that this, the funding for all of this is coming out of the, out of the recent SPOS program.
Yes, the 2024 SPOS.
Very good, thank you.
I'll just make just one more quick note about the Keckenwood contracts in particular. We've already entered into two contracts with Keckenwood on multi-use trails, so these will be substantially the same as those.
All right.
So, item 12 is the consideration to award the 2024 Tulamore-Green Castle Connector Multi-Use Path Professional Services, PW2024-07 to Keckenwood. Same thing, it's a 2024 SPOS project. The professional services include design, bid, and construction admin. As part of the design process, they include survey and utility coordination along with land acquisition. The design services are a lump sum of $28,700, with the bid and construction admin services at an hourly rate not to exceed $15,800. This gives a service maximum fee of $44,500. Once again, this is out of 2024 SPOS. Staff is recommending authorization, authorizing the mayor to execute and award the contract to Keckenwood for a total fee of $44,500 to perform their professional services on the 2024 Tulamore-Green Castle Multi-Use Path Project PW2024. So this is the same concept, we're coming out of the end of Tulamore on the exit side, and you will come down, it'll actually go, the current path that we're looking at is actually going down Dogwood a little ways, and then crossing over to get some line of sight on that, to make it, you know, we've got trucks and things that go down that road from the quarry and stuff like that, so we want to give as much line of sight as we can. Once again, it'll have rapid flashing beacon, the lights flashing when people approach it and engage that, and then they'll cross over to the other side and come down to Green Castle. Once again, it'll go into Green Castle a little bit before it gets back onto the road. Like, when we're at an intersection like that, you don't want to come right in front of the cars, you want to, when somebody comes around the turn, you want them to have enough time to recognize that there's something on the side of the road, or a car in the road crossing, so that they don't, you know, collide. So that's why we bring it in, the actual subdivision, or in the, in this case, the business area.
So the path itself will be on the north side of Dogwood Trail, go down, and then make the right into Green Castle?
It'll go down Dogwood Trail, cross Dogwood Trail, and then go back to, back to Green Castle.
Let me, let me bring the, the, well, the, yeah, Phillip's proposed map, let me, let me get that loaded real quick.
The reason we're offsetting it further down Dogwood Trail is so that it doesn't conflict with the intersection at 74, especially with cars coming out of the deceleration lane or crossing through that intersection. We're just looking to shift that pedestrian crossing, yeah, you can kind of see it there, further down Dogwood Trail. That just, just to allow for plenty of line of sight, and for motorists, you know, recognition of people crossing.
So you're going, you're going west, and then crossing over, and then going down the south side?
That's correct.
Of there.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the 2023 SPOS, not 2024 SPOS. Everything's 2023 SPOS, so if I say 2024, I mean 2023.
As you all can see, though, I want to interject, that this connection and the one he previously, this one in particular, so we've had people from Maple Shade talking to us for years about path connectivity downtown, and we've been trying to talk, you know, we've been talking about, you know, having to cross the railroad, and trying to deal with that, trying to go down the shoulder of Central Road, and the trucks, and so As you all can see though, I want to interject that this connection and the one he previously, this one in particular, so we've had people from Maple Shade talking to us for years about path connectivity downtown. And we've been trying to talk, you know, we've been talking about, you know, having to cross the railroad and trying to deal with that, trying to go down the, the shoulder of Central Road and the trucks. And so this connection, you know, it'll bring people down New Market Hill. There's a connect, existing connection in the Maple Shade. Which, you know, so this connection will get people connected to Peachtree City on that side, but it'll also get the folks in Maple Shade into downtown. So.
I like this design only for the standpoint that that traffic light at Green, uh, not, the stop sign at Green Castle and Dogwood. People, they just drive right through it. It's crazy with all the people dropping their kids off at the daycare centers and the schools, the way you've got three schools there. Um, and it's very, it's very busy there. So I like this design. This is good.
And just so you know, like, like Brandon was saying, when you cross the, the road and you go into the, uh, Tulamore subdivision, it connects to the Ash Park Brooks area.
Right.
And that'll go down to East Crestwood and hopefully at the next agenda, I will be presenting you with, um, the design services to start that project of running that path down there um, with a different A and E firm, uh, D with Pond. Any other questions on that?
There a motion?
I make a motion that we, uh, approve the, the contract for the mayor to authorize, um, for contract, PW two oh two four dash oh seven, um, for the professional services for Kirk, Keck and Wood. In the, for the maximum amount of forty four thousand five hundred dollars.
A second.
Question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item?
Next item is a consideration to award the twenty twenty four Sandy Creek High School Multi-Use Path Professional Services, PW twenty twenty four zero eight to Keckenwood. Uh, this again is a twenty twenty three SPOLOST project. Uh, the professional services include design bid and construction admin. Design services include surveying, utility coordination, school system accord coordination, railroad coordination, uh, services coordination and the land acquisition documents is necessary. The design are lump sum at a hundred and two thousand. Bid and construction admin services are at an hourly rate not to exceed forty three thousand four hundred. Total surfaces, services is a maximum fee of one hundred forty five thousand four hundred dollars. This funding is from the twenty twenty three SPOLOST. Uh, staff is recommending authorizing the mayor to execute and award the contract with Keckenwood for a total fee of a hundred and forty five thousand four hundred dollars to perform their professional services on the twenty twenty four Sandy Creek High School Multi-Use Path Project PW two zero two four hyphen zero eight. Um, this is a long path, um, coming all the way from basically where Swanson Road ties into, uh, Sonoya Road. It'll follow Sonoya Road no- north up to Powers Court. Go down that road, it will cross Railroad Spur. And that's where the railroad coordination comes in. It's my understanding that it is, that section is still part of a private ownership or multiple person, multiple group ownership. So it's going to be a little different. It's not necessarily going to be with CSX. And then from there, we'll cross over into, um, our property that's on the other side. And from there, we'll go up to the school and cross into the school and take it from there.
It'll end up in.
Approximately forty eight hundred feet.
It'll end up in the school parking lot, right?
Right. Yes. That's our goal is to take it down to the, to the parking lot.
You know, where do we, when we come up, uh, Sonoya Road into the business park, how is that, how is that crossing over from the street over the railroad tracks and then into the, you know, onto our property and then into the school? Is there any land acquisition that's necessary? Do we have an easement?
We, we have right of way all the way down Powers Way or Powers Court. I forget which one it is. Um, so when we get to that, we hit the railroad eas- railroad, which I said is believed to be privately owned. Um, so if that's, it's going to be land acquisition there, we're going to try to get fee simple ownership of it. Once we cross over that, then we're in our property again. There's a section of property behind the dog, um, animal res- uh, rescue center. Uh, and then we'll cross into the Bay County School Board property to make the connection there. So the land acquisition is going to be primarily the railroad and anything else along the way where we have to do something to get around something. You know, like if we have, say we have a power poles in the way and we decided moving the power poles is more expensive than the land acquisition to go around them to the right instead of going around to the left and putting the, the school kids in the carts right up against the road. We can put them to the other side, make it safer.
So if a principal asks one of us, when can you have some students getting to school on golf cart? What's the answer?
Um, years. And the reason why, nobody wants to hear that, but the reason why is this is a long project. Um, it's a long distance. It's a lot of survey work. It's a lot of utility coordination. We have the railroad coordination stuff that we have to go through with this one. So there's that land acquisition associated with it. And the other big thing is we have to give time for the money for SPOLOST to actually come in, have enough money to do the project. So the order that I'm reading them to you tonight is the order that we see getting things done more quickly. The shorter route at Laurel, Laurelwood Connector project, shorter, less money as the funds come in from SPOLOST. That one will be able to do more quickly because we don't have to make as much money. So this is going to be towards, I would think like the second, third year before enough money's coming in to do this. Because these aren't the only SPOLOST projects you have too. So you have a lot of, there's a lot of, a lot of time that needs to take to start building that up. We, how much did we get in two thousand seven, the last two thousand seventeen SPOLOST, if you remember roughly?
Eleven plus.
Like probably eleven seven hundred, eleven million seven hundred something.
Was the end, the end number. But how much was just the year?
Oh. No, I don't.
No, you don't know. Anyway, ob- obviously it's not eleven million dollars in one year, right? So, um, yeah, it all depends upon how quickly it comes in.
We also have not received any money from twenty twenty three SPOLOST yet. I expect next week, I'm kind of expecting it to, our first, um, first amount of money to show up, which would be from July when it first started. So the July sales tax should show up hopefully next week. But it, it's always two months late before we ever receive it.
Fall of twenty five, fall of twenty six.
How long am I going to be? Well, let's say twenty four, twenty five. I would, um, I would say you'd be doing construction probably in twenty twenty five and completion in twenty twenty six. Would be my, my estimate, but until we really know how quickly the money's coming in. I mean, obviously if we have, the economy goes bad, then SPOLOST numbers don't come in as large, takes longer. The economy improves, it gets even better. All right.
Scott, do you have any concerns about the area, once you cross over the railroad tracks or even once you get off of Sonoya Road there, about the, the lighting it? Because you're going to have, you're going to have these young people riding those golf carts at all hours of the day and night and, and they're going to probably use it as a cut through to get up to, uh, Jenkins Road as well. Is that, is, would you consider that maybe a concern that we, that lighting has to be involved in that? Just a thought.
Yeah, I definitely think it's something we need to consider. Um, at what point we do that is a decision that will be made based off obviously available funding.
Right.
Um, based on, um, how my boss tells me to proceed and how you tell him to proceed with those kinds of things. But yes, I mean, eventually I would think that would be a wise thing to do, um, because even during the winter months, a lot of them will be traveling up there when it's dark and things like that.
Four o'clock, it's dark when they're cutting out of school.
I haven't driven all of the Peachtree City trails yet. I can tell you that. I've been on a few of them. Um, I don't remember seeing a ton of lighting on the trails. Um, I, next time I go down near McIntosh, I may take a harder look at, if there's any lighting along those, but I don't think there is. I think maybe in the section where you get off Powers Court, just between that and getting over to the school, might be a reasonable, reasonable area.
I think you have to consider, so you can make this whatever you want. And, and we know that, you know, Peachtree City is not the definitive, this is what it's got to be. But that said, you know, the, the same kids driving the golf carts to school with headlights on the golf carts are going to be driving down, could be driving a car. You know, so I mean, it's just one of those things. If I'm a parent and I have the availability to send my kid out on a golf cart, I accept, just like putting a kid in a car, you're accepting a risk. Um, you know, there are certain areas that, yes, you probably won't let, but I think people who grow up in golf path communities are used to some areas not being well lit. Uh, but again, we can make this whatever you guys want it to be, but there are, there are no definitive rules that require lighting along these types of paths. But I, we do, we do note your concern about the safety. Um, but we, we're ju- we're trying to get this done and we want to make it as, as a, you know, financially, uh, doable, you know, financially feasible as possible. Um, and the lighting, I mean, lighting just adds so much. I mean, the pickleball court, I mean, it was, it was over a hundred thousand dollars to add lighting to the pickleball court. That's why we went with what we did. So, um, and it's just.
Maybe we could add solar later or something.
Perhaps, yeah, that's an option. But, um, yeah, I mean, we're, our, you know, the town, the town's on the hook for, uh, a lot of money every year when it comes to, to lighting. There are areas of town that I would, if we were, if we were talking about spending money on security lighting or street lighting, um, there's areas of town that I would, you know, I would guide you to spend your money rather than something like this. That, that's just my take on it. So for discussion.
All right. Is there a, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we award the twenty twenty four Sandy Creek High School Multi-Use Path Professional Services, PW twenty twenty four zero eight to Keck and Wood, not to exceed the amount of a hundred and forty five thousand four hundred dollars.
A second.
There any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I don't sign this one either. All right, next.
All right. This next one is a consideration to award professional design services for the twenty twenty four Adams Lake Dam Improvements Project W, Project PW twenty twenty four hyphen ten and the twenty twenty four Handley Park Dam Improvements Project PW twenty twenty four twelve to Schenabel Engineering. Since this is a dam project, you know, I don't do dams now. So Brandon's going to take. So as part of the SPOLOST, um, these projects were identified and approved. The twenty twenty four Adams Lake Dam Improvements, um, for those who may not remember, Adams Lake Dam is in Maple Shade subdivision. It is a category two dam, um, which means it has a, a dam of a certain area of, or volume of water being stored behind it or a certain height. Um, and this one, I believe beats it based off of the volume of water and it's very close to the height also. Uh, the difference between this and like the Pendleton Dam, which is category one, is that if this dam breaks, the potential for loss of life is, does not exist downstream like it does on the Pendleton Dam. So as part of a category two dam, we still have responsibility to, of course, maintain our structures. And this is one that we own. Um, we have a road over it, which makes us, you know, owner of this one. And the, uh, services that we're talking about here are professional services for both the dams. And these services include engineering, uh, like a preliminary engineering evaluation, um, and some surveying services. Uh, they're also going to look at the hydrologic and hydraulic analysis, which will be conducted. They're going to look at how much water's coming into this. How high does the water rise? How fast does the water go out? Make sure that they're designed appropriately. That hydraulic and hydraul- hydro, the hydrologic and hydraulic analysis will probably not have to be performed on the Maple Shade Dam or the Adams Lake Dam. Um, because this company actually were the original designers of that dam. Um, they're, they're a huge dam company. If you don't know who they are, they, they build dams all over them. And the person who's actually working this project was the one who actually designed this dam. So he's very, very knowledgeable about that particular dam. Uh, but this information does not exist on the Handley Dam, uh, which is a smaller dam. But so we're going to do those evaluations. We're going to do things like the trees on the back of the dam. They're going to look at the spillway. Is it adequately sized? Is it, is it still operational? Is it, uh, have any structural problems, those kinds of things? We're all going to sit down and work on that and evaluate that with them. And once we have that information, then we'll come back with, okay, here's the scope of work or what we need to do on Adams Lake Dam. And here's the scope of work or what we need to do on the Handley Park Dam. And then we'll do the design fees for that. So that's the process. So this is the first part of it, getting all this decided, what, what needs to be done. Um, part of the surveying information that's being done on the Adams Lake Dam will be, so we can also discuss, um, potential land acquisition on that, uh, which we'll get into more detail later once we get through the evaluations and know more about, uh, more about that scope. So these professional services, services are lump sum at thirty four thousand five hundred for Adams Lake Dam and eighteen thousand dollars for Handley Park Dam. There, if you noticed in the, uh, proposal, there was also one for Shamrock Dam in here. The Shamrock Dam, a lot of this, uh, pre-evaluation stuff is already being done on another project that we're doing on that dam with a, with a, uh, another engineer of record, consultant. So we are going to let them continue with that and add a little stuff to that so that they can basically do the same thing since they're already basically doing probably sixty to seventy percent of, of, of this preliminary part. So this is once again a twenty twenty three SPOLOST project. So the funding will come from twenty twenty three SPOLOST. The staff is recommending authorizing the mayor to execute and award the preliminary engineering services contract, double engineering for the twenty twenty four Adams Lake Dam Project, uh, PW twenty twenty four ten and for the twenty twenty four Handley Park Dam Improvement Project, which is PW twenty twenty four twelve, for a total of fifty two thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay. Is there any questions?
That's each or for in total?
Total. It's thirty four thousand for five hundred for Adams and eighteen thousand for Handley.
And they're both being done by that huge dam company?
Yep, by that huge dam company.
Keep it clean.
Well, he said it first.
What they do. They make dams. They do a good job of it. This is also the same company that's doing Castle Lake, for those who didn't know that, which is a private dam in town.
Uh, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we award, um, professional design services for the twenty twenty four Adams Lake Dam Improvement Project, PW dash two oh two four dash ten and the two twenty twenty four Handley Park Dam Improvements Project PW dash two oh two four dash one two two Schenabel Engineering. Uh, not to exceed fifty two thousand five hundred total for both dams.
Second.
More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Man, that's another one that you don't have to sign at this time. All right. So next is item fifteen, which is consideration to approve the right of way plans uh, and authorize legal counsel to proceed with land acquisition for project number PW twenty twenty one thirteen oh four, which is the Palm Meadow Arrowood Spencer Roundabout. Uh, this project is a two thousand seventeen SPOLOST project. Um, it is in ninety percent complete, uh, uh, design and we are ready to start that land acquisition. The total land acquisitions are as follows. Right of way, which will be a permanent, uh, thing is one point six two eight acres. Construction and maintenance, which is also a permanent easement, uh, will be zero point three two six acres. Construction slopes, which is a temporary, and if you look on the, the, uh, chart I gave you, I think it says, uh, temp slash perm. Uh, we weren't sure exactly what they were yet, um, in conversation with the designing, uh, designers. Those, all three of those that you see on there that say temp slash perm are going to be temporary, um, construction easements. Uh, so anyway, the construction slopes are zero point five six acres and driveways, there's zero point zero seven four acres, which is also temporary. That is primarily to give us room to work around their driveway, um, when we're doing the work on the road and stuff like that. We have to tie into it, things like that. It's just a little extra room to be able to turn a piece of equipment around, stuff like that without going on with their property. Obviously, I'm sorry, obviously the temporary, uh, easements for construction are, are less costly than permanent.
In the image before you, what's in yellow is permanent, what's in blue are the slope easements, and what's in green, I'm sorry, green slope easements, and then what's in blue are the temporary easements.
And the pink are the driveways.
Any questions? There a motion?
I make a motion that we authorize legal counsel to proceed with the land acquisition for project PW 2021-13-04 of the Palmetto Arrowood Spencer Roundabout.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 16.
All right, so number 16 is the consideration to award task order number nine, that's, which is for the 2024 Asphalt Resurfacing Project, PW 2024-01, which is part of the 2021 Transportation Engineering Services Project that was awarded to Pond in 2021. This is through the extension that you guys recently did of their Pond's contract. So this project is task order number nine. The project scope includes basically putting a topping on Foxford Run that it never had when it was constructed, you know, the final layer of asphalt, and then resurfacing Laurelwood Road, Laurel Lake, Ridge Road, and Strawberry Lane. These funds will come out of the General Funds Public Works, which is 140,522205. And also will let you know that this was submitted to GDOT for the 2024 LMIG funding, which was just recently approved this week, or that was their contribution, was 133,000 some odd dollars. So once again, we're leveraging, we're leveraging that, that's a 730 split, they're 70% or 30%. So their contribution to this project is 133,000. So staff recommends awarding task order number, number nine, excuse me, to 2024 Asphalt Resurfacing Project, PW 2024-01, it's supposed to be 2024-01, not 23, to Pond Incorporated for the fee not to exceed 74,851.75.
Doc, could I ask to remind you at the four-way stop on Laurelwood, that that?
Yes, ma'am.
Junk, whatever you want to call it, in the middle of that road, take it out.
The crossing, the crosswalk, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, we'll get rid of that.
Take it out.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
That's covered.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
How do you really feel?
All right, is there a motion? There a motion?
I make a motion that we, that we award task order nine, the project number PW 2024-01 to Pond Incorporated, not to exceed 74,851.75 for the resurfacing of Fox Run, excuse me, Fox Ford Run, Laurelwood Road, Laurel Lake, Ridge Road, and Strawberry Lane.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Scott.
You're all welcome.
All right, public comment period again. Is there any, are there any public comments similar to before? Welcome to comment this time. Okay, hearing none? Are there any staff comments?
I do have one. This is just follow-up from our, from our last council meeting. There was some concern brought up about 808 Sonoya Road and the accessory structure located on the property. There was some concern about the legality of the structure from a permitting perspective and the approval from environmental health, wanting some research on that. I did pull all of our documentation on that structure, applied for permit appropriately. And I do have the environmental health approval form for the accessory structure as well here, if anybody wants to take a look at it. They do talk about how the reserve or the current field area is adequate and that there is room for reserve backup septic on the property. Fence would have to be rerouted if they were to use that reserved area, but environmental health did approve that accessory structure. And is there any other questions about, you know, accessory structures in general? I can, I can answer any of those questions, but I did just want to make sure that we revisited that item and that, you know, everything seems to be in order.
I appreciate that. So people are going to live there in the back. The front has the office, they are going to live in the house.
The, the, the accessory structure will have finished square footage in it, so it will have habitable space, a small office in the front. I, I, I don't know in terms of living, it's not, it's not a full secondary home. It's an, it's considered an accessory structure with finished square footage, which we permit. We permit up to 700 square feet of finished square footage in accessory structures. But we'll have habitable space in it.
Any other staff comments?
I'd like to give a shout out to the public works crew. They've been working over there cleaning up 969 Sonoya Road, about of getting that stuff cleaned. Hard on it and at a very low cost to the town. Thanks to Brandon also helped get the dumpsters from ham waste to come, so we saved a lot of money there also. So our next steps is asbestos service is being done, we've got a couple wells to close out.
It looks really good. I've had people at the park tell me. Yeah.
Uh, they've done the testing. Phillip's expecting them any moment now.
Yeah, they, they said that they could get, they would likely get back to us this week, next week at the latest. So we'll know for sure one way or another soon.
Any other staff comments?
I'd like to thank Abbey Lawn publicly for weed eating a big, big portion of Laurelwood, which came right across the front of my house and where my sister lives in another house. They weeded the ditch first time since we've had them under contract, and it was a great help to me. It's a steep ditch and I tried weed eating it, I kept falling off. I couldn't keep my balance up there, so it was really appreciated. I mean, they just did it out of the blue. I guess they knew it looked bad, so thanks to them.
Counsel comments? Other counsel comments?
Want to talk about the museum?
This Sunday from 2 to 4 at the Tyrone Museum, we will have a big event. It's really to recognize and remember 9/11. And we will have several vehicles from the county, from the town. I think it will be really good. Got ice cream to sell, we've got some food trucks. So it'll be a fun time if anybody has a chance to come out and just enjoy the time together.
I'd like to mention and a shout out to Linda and Christie for the wonderful job that they did at our first, last, our, our last first Friday of the season. We had a movie, as most people know, How to Train Your Dragon, and I, we had a beautiful night. I mean, the weather couldn't have been any better, and I, I was very pleased with the crowd that we had there. And I, everybody truly appreciated being there and it was very good. You girls have done a phenomenal job for the Downtown Development Authority for all of the first Friday events that we have, and we're certainly looking forward to next season to go there as well. So I want to thank you and appreciate all the work that you and Linda do. Thank you.
Okay, any other counsel comments? There a need for executive session? There a motion to adjourn?
I move.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.